Good. Is it on?
I don't see it.
He said, "We're good." All right, we're going. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I call this meeting of the Frazier Planning Commission for December 3, 2025, to order at 7:01 PM. If everybody will turn off their cell phones or put them on silent and stand and join me in our Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice and moral.
Thanks. Now, we'll begin with roll call. Ms. Deputy Clerk, if you'll do that.
Commissioner Vahr.
Here.
Commissioners Zarneki.
Present.
Commissioner Farina.
Here.
Commissioner Kyle.
Here.
Commissioner Meyer.
Here.
Commissioner Toller.
Here.
Chairman Warnock.
Here.
Right?
Thank you.
All present.
Okay, now, we need approval of our agenda. Does anybody want to have any comments first on, or any changes?
No.
I move to accept the agendas presented.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Farina, seconded by Commissioner Kyle. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any ayes? Okay. All right, thanks. So, let's start with my opening remarks, then. Tonight's meeting will follow the agenda, which was posted online, has been printed for you here. Before we begin, it's important to let everyone know that the Planning Commission is created by state law. The commission is comprised of seven members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The role of the Planning Commission is to plan and promote the efficient coordinated development of the city for the health, safety, and general welfare of its residents. We are not here to negotiate with applicants or allow everything an applicant is requesting. However, the Planning Commission does have the power to approve certain requests and recommend others, depending on the nature of the request and whether all the standards and the zoning ordinance have been met. Planning Commission may also impose conditions on a proposed project in order to ensure that those standards are met. Other individuals with us here tonight are legal representatives from O'Reilly, Ransilio, PC, Alicia Erickson, city planner, Representative McKenna and Associates, Lawrence Sayer, and city's deputy clerk, Jennifer Hyder. Procedure followed by the Planning Commission for public hearings first involves the city planner providing an overview of each case. After the overview is completed, the applicant will be asked to provide additional information, answer any questions the Planning Commission members may have. After the commission's questions, public's invited to speak. Each person will have one opportunity to speak, must only speak directly to the specific case, and must only address the commission, not the petitioner or anyone else in attendance. After the public has had an opportunity to speak, commission members may again ask questions of the petitioner, and then the commission will consider a motion. Now that we've gone over those guidelines, I'll move forward with agenda item number five, approval of the minutes of the last meeting. Any discussion or comments?
Mr. Chair, I do have one comment. I was not present for the last meeting, so I do believe that needs to be changed to Mr. Hushan.
Yes, we did discuss. So, yes, we have to do that, change that. I had one thing, too, real simple, but it was just in seven, unfinished business where the concerns of the city planner, it gave the article numbers. So, Article 3, then it went to 4, then 5, and then it said 5 again, and that should be a 6 for industrial zoning districts. That's the only thing I had. Anybody else? Now, it'll consider a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll support.
Support. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Kyle, support by Commissioner Zarneki. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes. So, move right on to new business. First, we have is a public hearing for Code of Ordinances Amendment for corner lot fences on residential property. Lauren, if you want to give us the background on this?
Thank you, Chair Warnock. So, I want to start by saying that our new ordinance is moving fences into the zoning ordinance, and typically, we think of fences in zoning. They, currently, the ZBA has the ability to grant those variances, so it, but it's currently not actually in the zoning ordinance. So, this is a discussion, we did notice it for public hearings, so we should open and close a public hearing. Planning Commission does not need to necessarily make a recommendation, since it's not within the statutory purview, but we did want to discuss this with Planning Commission, as it's typically a planning-related topic. So, if at the end of the night, or at the end of the discussion, Planning Commission doesn't want to make a recommendation, they don't have to. If they, if you want us to carry forward a recommendation to council, we could also do that, as just letting them know that Planning Commission did also vet this change. So, what we would like to address is the privacy fence provision on residential corner lots. So, currently, the zoning ordinance references this Fence Review Committee that does not exist anymore, and also requires fences to be four feet and non-site obscuring, so something like a chain link or a split rail type fence on the side street of the corner lot. It has to be at least one foot inside the side street lot line, not extend beyond the front building line. So, you know, we've received a lot of applications in the Building Department for fences on the side yard lot line. ZBA reviewed a case earlier this year regarding that, and when this ordinance was implemented, our opinion is that it was to ensure that there is clear vision at the intersections. And we believe that this can still be accomplished while allowing residents to have privacy fences on their corner lots, like their neighbors. And so, we hope that this helps reduce the number of variances and allows more people to use their properties as they would like to. So, I've kind of put two versions, and they're similar before, just for consideration. The first one is privacy fences on residentially zoned, your used corner lots are permitted, provided they do not extend beyond the front building line of the property they are placed, and are located within one foot inside the side street lot line. And then, the other one, option two, same beginning, and then, the difference is, it adds that they also may not extend beyond the front setback of adjacent properties. And so, I'll give some examples, there's some examples as well for what this looks like. Essentially, for option one, what this allows, it allows for a larger area to be enclosed, but it may not maintain a continuous front yard along blocks. It also, we still believe it will maintain clear vision, generally speaking. Of course, there's always going to be a weird case here or there, but generally speaking. For option two, again, it's just the flip, you know, reduces the lot area that can be enclosed on a lot of lots, but it will maintain that continuous front yard. So, visually, what that looks like a little bit, you can see in the first image, the blue is option one, so most of the lot yard's able to be enclosed. Option two would have it stop at the front building line of that property to the rear, as you can see. For lots that are going, just facing each other, there's two on the end, it really is kind of negligible, but it really just comes into play when there's, in the rear, a lot, that's the side yard of the rear lot. Leave this is, sorry, the same slide. And then, visually, what this looks like from the ground, you can see, option one, it extends into the front a little bit, or could, on a, so that lot's on the corner, and then this is where the block starts and continues. And then, option two, that fence actually belongs to the farther house, and it's not enclosing the side yard, it's stopping at the front of that building line. So, though, I'll go back to the slide that has the two provisions, but open to any discussion or questions at this point.
Does anybody have any questions for the planner?
Which do you prefer?
I think that, it's hard, that's why I have two, because I was going back and forth, but I do think allow it. So, visually, option two looks a lot more harmonious, but I think it really limits a lot of parcels and their ability to enclose it.
Put back to the picture, please. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, myself, I, of course, I'd had to deal with this for 22 years here, and fences, they haven't changed, the ordinance hasn't changed, since it was always that way. But we did have a Fence Review Committee, which was just made up of the building official, the DPW Director, Director of Public Safety, and the city manager. So, what we would do when something like this came up, we would put it all together into a packet, every, all four individuals would go check the site out, and then see, and mark it approved or not, and we would go forward that way. So, that's the way we did those things back then. The ordinance hasn't changed, but it's, it's really confusing and hard, because if you look, I mean, is it right here, I got my pointer, but if you look, like, say, this one, if you met the ordinance, it's the red right here, and is it fair to these people? You know, this property becomes really unusable, and they paid for it, it's their property. And if they, and they always wanted to cover that, but we, what we would do, and you don't address that part, but we used to, and there's some in the city that have it because of what we did, was put an angle like right here, a 45-degree angle, because of the safety issue with kids on the sidewalks. So, they'd be walking here, and you got this guy's driveway here, who couldn't have anything in front on his place, but the corner lot could, and a car could be pulling out here from the garage, and they're not, they can't even see if there's somebody on the sidewalk. So, that 45-degree gave them a visual if somebody was coming by. So, it's, I would think personally, that that would be a great thing to put into an ordinance, and, but.
Yeah.
If you're going to go that route, because it's going to be so inconsistent everywhere, and it does, you get rid of straight lines that way, when you start putting angles like that. So, I know it's tough to, to make it work, but to give people their best use of their property, it worked in the past, so I'm just, I just want to bring that up, because is it?
Yeah, and so, we have clear vision, but our current clear vision doesn't address driveways, the proposed, as provisions about driveway, corner clearance, and it's a little, it's like half the distance of an intersection corner clearance.
Right.
That's not in place yet.
I know, that's like the corner, the corner vision.
Right.
And that's where the 45-degree usually comes in, is because of this corner here for traffic and seeing there, and people coming across the sidewalk. But, that thing, if you go, you got that, you go to that next house, or the picture you had, I think you have another one there, right?
Yeah.
That first, okay, now, this, when you think about it, this guy, he can't have this fence here, but this guy can have that fence there. So, you've, you've kind of taken it away from him, where if he wanted to have a fence there, but he can't, and now, all of a sudden, he has to put up with a fence there where he couldn't before. It's kind of like you're taking away somebody's rights, or, you know, if you understand what I'm saying. He has no say-so, if this guy decides to put that fence there, he doesn't have to get his permission, so he puts that fence there, and all of a sudden, this guy has this fence right in his front yard, actually, and by all rights, it's on the lot line. So, it becomes dual, is it dual ownership? I don't know, that's always been a problem in the, in.
There's no way to make.
There's no way.
To make both of those.
Right. It's, it's, you know, who's going to maintain, who's going to do what, you know, and that's why the separation, then, if you put a fence, if there's an existing, you can't have two fences against each other, it's got to have a three-foot separation, so.
Would the 45 be a way out to kind of open up this guy's view?
It'd help a little bit, but to me, I wouldn't want, you know.
It would look ugly.
That fence is in that other person's yard.
Yeah. So, that's the problem with corner lots. Over in that second one, yeah, I mean, this guy has a front yard, but this guy has two front yards, because he has two front setbacks, basically, when you think the side yard is like a front setback, because he faces a street.
Depends on the relationship of each property.
Yeah, so, it's, it's really, it's a.
I'm guessing.
It becomes a big bag of whatever, you know?
The house in option two is facing the other way, facing the other street, that's not the front of it.
Right, and same with the other guys. That isn't the front of his, it's the side. But there is, you do get them the opposite way, too. So, you are going to have houses that do, and that's not, if his house was facing this way, I don't think he could have that.
Wouldn't have it in the, it'd be the front, yeah.
So, yeah, it's only because his house faces the other street. This becomes his rear yard, that's why.
Right.
So, it wouldn't be his rear yard if the house faced this way, so he can't have it in the front yard. So, the problem is, a front yard is also a front setback for a side yard, like. It's just, it's so confusing, and it's always been a problem in this city, and you're, that's why it's mixed all over the place. Some let it go one way, then we came to where I think we had a good system with the four being involved, at least, and, you know, signing for it, but that's gone by the wayside, it appears, so I don't, you know, we pick one option, there, you know, there's going to be some against the other, that option. I don't know. I really don't know the answer. It's, but you go back and look at some of these other ones, and you go, holy cow, that's the way it should be. This guy can't use his yard at all. Look at his backyard on that, if you go to that other picture, and you go to that other one, and look at this guy's backyard now, he's got no backyard when you do it, you know, and I think the one I'm looking at is a different, no, it's that one right there. So, if you just look at the red, his backyard is the usable space for his privacy that he, he's doing this for. And here, like you said, it really doesn't impact anybody else. The only thing it creates a problem when, and this is pretty far away from what's usual. Usually, that driveway is really close to this. If you go around the city, you're going to find a ton of them, in Moulin Rouge, and a lot of these subdivisions that have houses with not much of a setback, you know, the minimum setbacks. So, it becomes, you know, he could use his yard, if he could use this blue one, but at least cutting the corner created a safety saving, you know, stop somebody from kid getting hit. I mean, how would you feel if you put that thing up, and then some kid got ran over by his, on his tricycle? They can't even see, because a little kid on a tricycle even is low, but at least a vision, and then the kid could see, too, that a car's coming.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Can you give us, or somebody give us a history on the Fence Review Committee? I'd like to know how long it was in session, why it went defunct, because personally, I think this should be subjective, you know, individual lot to individual lot, depending on the relationship to his name.
It was here previous to me, starting in 96.
96?
Until I left in 2018.
So, why did it go defunct?
So, I had no idea after 2018 what happened with it.
Okay.
It was a standard procedure, we had forms for it and everything.
And it was administrative only, or did you own a public hearing?
No, we didn't have hearings on it or anything.
Because it would be nice to get the voice of neighbors.
Because this wasn't in our zoning ordinance.
Okay.
You know, it was in the, it's in the Code of Ordinances for the, for the city.
And when it comes to corner lots, they have, their lots are always larger.
Yes.
Right.
But they're more unusable, too, and they got to maintain them.
But they also bought that corner lot.
Right, exactly. They knew ahead of time what they were doing. I know.
Yeah, unless you're a first-time owner, and you don't know.
Now, that other one, at the end, is different, and it shows the roads.
Right.
That it's movie and.
That one's fine.
Yeah, because there's no sidewalks here.
Right.
So, this guy, it's only fair to give the guy that much more, if he can, and still keep the setback from here.
Correct. It all has to do with the setback.
And it gives them all that, I, you know, so that's why each case has to be looked at individually.
I agree.
Really.
I agree with you, Mr. Chair.
I'm really tied with this.
It's currently written, if, even if the Fence Review Committee still existed, they only give them permission to put a four-foot, non-site obscuring, so it's upon review of the Fence Committee, so.
I would agree with that, would you?
Yeah.
That's my personal opinion.
But there were six footers, too, I know. I don't know. Commissioner Toller.
I think we're getting a little bit in the weeds on this one here, because at the end of the day, there's like already some provisions, and the whole point of this is not to fix everything, like, everything that we do is very socially complicated, there's a lot of nuances and everything, and what we're just trying to do is, we're trying to solve for the many, rather than focus on the, the ones that are just going to be specifics. And at the end of the day, you know, we're not even like doing anything other than just a recommendation, and as far as like, just trying to maintain like rights of what's going on and what people have, what these two options really boil down to are just like appearance, right? Option one, slightly less good appearance, because you can go a little further in some spots, and that obstructs that, but then, if we are deferred to option two, it significantly decreases the amount of usable yard space. And I think that decreasing yard space is definitely a, more of a negative than some appearances, because it's going to really just, I don't think that an extra five or 10 feet of fence missing is going to prevent somebody from getting hit. I think it's still going to happen regardless if we do that, and, you know, you just, you got to be careful, you're in a neighborhood. If you're pulling out on the street, and you know that your fence is like that, you're going to go slow.
Little kids don't, little kids don't know that.
That's, that's why.
Safety is an issue.
That's why it is on the responsibility of the driver, like, at the end of the day, if they're going to pull out of their garage like a bat out of hell and run over a kid that's coming on the sidewalk, that's on them for not paying attention, that's not on, you know, the fence for existing in the first place, you know, it's a neighborhood, you go slow.
By the way, if you can create, not create that situation.
I just don't think that the, I don't think that the cutoff, I would like to see some like actual science behind it, and for it being like a significant difference, because I don't envision it being a significant difference, by having to really drill in there and get in there with a lot of specifics and stipulations on like an ordinance like this. Like, this is, again, this is something that's supposed to solve for most, not all, and if there becomes issues, that's something that can be addressed in the future, because otherwise, we're going to spend forever and a lot of effort coming up with something that's going to be very confusing for the public to understand as well, because.
Exactly, that's what we did get.
Like, I'm not even the most well-versed in all this stuff, and I've learned a lot over the last two years, but like, the average person in the public that wants to look into this, if we start really getting into there, like, it makes it a lot more difficult. That is my opinion. I think that option one is a fantastic way to, you know, give people a lot more use, give some really strong structure, and accomplishes everything that I think anyone would need to use. I will say, I do have a corner lot, so I am a little bit biased.
Yeah.
But I already have a fence, too, so like, I'm, I'm not really worried about it. But, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Farina?
I heard her say that because there's not a sidewalk here, that, that was a, that has, that cannot go in the right of way, right?
That's a sidewalk.
That is a sidewalk?
No, it'd have.
Got to be one foot in.
It'd have to be, yes, in one foot, and it's, could just be how I drew, it's a thick line, but.
Oh, okay.
They'll still have an area to maintain, one foot in.
Yeah.
I, personally, I kind of like the idea that Randy brought up with the 45-degree angle there.
I can't hear you, Commissioner Farina.
I like the idea that Randy brought up with the 45-degree angle.
Would that just be for, if there's a driveway, like, if there was no driveway there, you would.
That's the thing, you'd have to look at each situation.
Right, and I think, I mean, again, there's a lot of moving pieces, the new ordinance, when we get to the clear vision, we do differentiate driveway clear vision versus two-street clear vision, but I do agree that that is a good thing to include in the ordinance, generally.
So, this is a gap measure, is what you're saying, until the new ordinance gets.
Yes.
So, Alicia, which, I mean, you're the attorney, what would, I mean, you see what can happen. The fact that it can happen, and we know it can happen, and we don't do something about it, are we, do we hold any liability for that?
So, are you referencing the potential for the clear vision triangles, that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
So, as Lauren mentioned, the new proposed.
The new proposed zoning ordinance does address some of your concerns in terms of having that protection along that driveway. I know that we've seen similar cases in Sterling Heights, because we also have a clear vision triangle there as well, that's specific to driveways. So, I don't think there's a liability concern. Obviously, whatever's on the books right now for fences, that's been on the books forever, that addresses, you know, the clear vision between two street intersections, that's been on the books. But I do think, you know, obviously, thinking of that, depending on what option is even considered or recommended or discussed, you know, city council can think of that as well, and they're, you know, the ultimate decision-maker here. I think it's a great thing to think about, which obviously Lauren has addressed in a new draft, but as Mr. Farina said, it's kind of a stopgap, so to speak, in the meantime, so there are kind of two processes going on at the moment, so.
Yeah, because that's the way you got to look at it, and the one good thing is, they get permits for fences, so somebody, whoever's issuing the permit, should check the site out like you would normally do anyway, and if the site looks like it requires something to modify it a little, or whatever, to make it that way, I would, I would say that, so it can happen just in the permit process.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, you would hope that someone wouldn't just construct a six-foot privacy fence, like, you know, as proposed, you would hope that they would go through the right channels, but of course, if they don't.
Yeah.
That's what we have code enforcement for, so.
Yeah.
There are obviously checks and balances on whatever's being proposed, no matter what option that you go with.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, my mic's on.
Oops, I'm sorry. Hold, hold on.
She can go first, ladies first.
Okay, Joanne.
A new rule, are you going to go through the city, and anybody that doesn't comply, are you going to have to change it?
No, so, it's similar to driveways, where it's, you know, going forward, when we look at applications that come in, we'd be applying the changed ordinance.
Well, I have a corner lot, I don't have a fence, but I'm just, because I have a corner lot, I'm saying.
Put your mic back.
I'm saying.
Is it on?
I have a corner lot with no fence, however, if somebody has a fence now, and they've had it for 20 years, are you going to tell them they have to tear it down because you have a new rule?
No, again, that's not the intent at all.
You're going to allow it, if it's already here, you're going to allow it.
Correct.
Okay. Only reason I'm a little bit concerned with all the new rules that are coming in, Frazier was a small town, and you couldn't hardly get a house here. As soon as it hit the market, it was gone. The schools were packed, and now, what's happened? We've got more and more rules, the schools are not packed, we have to bus kids in because we don't have enough, families are obviously not running to buy in Frazier, and I'm saying that's a concern, and maybe it's all these new rules, and people don't feel it's the small town that it was. That's the only thing I'm concerned about.
Thanks.
Amen.
Mr. Kyle.
The reason, I mean, I would be for option one, and the biggest reason, if I come to Frazier and I bought a house, that house on the left, and I wanted to put up a fence, and all of a sudden, the city tells me, no, you can't do that, I just bought a house with property that I can no longer use. I mean, can I use it? Yeah, I can walk out the garage, go around the side, but.
You got to maintain.
I mean, if you want to have a party, or a picnic, or a pool put in, house number one can't do it, if we go ahead and say option two. I would 100% be for option one. Now, the kids getting hit by the bike, I guarantee you, this kills more kids than that fence would. You know, I don't have a fence, I mean, I got a fence in my backyard, but when I pulled my truck out today, I stopped at the sidewalk, even though I can see all the way around before I go across. That's called driving, the way you're supposed to. You know, if we got a bunch of idiots that's going to blast out of that garage and hit a kid on a tricycle, then he shouldn't have a driver's license. So, we can't punish people and say, you can no longer use your backyard, you know, for barbecues and stuff, because we're afraid that, you know, a driver might hit that kid. So I'm 100% for option one.
I'll put.
Amen. That means I'm done.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Amets?
I'm 100% up for option number two, and I think safety is the priority. Um, I would even, I, yeah, I'm very much in favor of doing this per lot, and it based on the relationship of a parcel to another parcel. And again, I mean, you buy a corner lot, you, if you wanna put a fence up, you need to find out in advance where you can place your fence before you buy a house. So that's, that's my opinion. I'm not so sure I even like the one-foot setback against a, a fence. I've have, you know, I watch, I walk around my neighborhood and I see the fences there and, and one foot is not enough. I would go for one and a half to two feet.
Especially when you have handlebars sticking out on a bike.
You've got it.
Elbows jamming against.
I agree with you, Mr. Chair. I think you and I have been down this route together here. It's, it's a big safety issue.
For a long time. So, that's the only thing. If there was a way to just make it, everything work perfect, it's the only thing. I never wanna take anybody's personal property rights away.
I agree with you, but you're also, if you're, when you're doing it as option one, you're taking the rights away of the person to the rear or to the south, however that is.
Right, right, like you said.
You're taking the rights away from another neighbor.
Yeah, because he's not allowed to put a fence there, and now all of a sudden, he gets a fence there.
And we can't wait until you say, okay, my neighbor put up a fence, but I don't agree with it. So, I mean, there's two sides to this.
I agree. Anybody else? Okay, so it's a public hearing, so it's go out to the public. Um, I see nobody out there. I guess nobody's gonna speak against it, so.
Against or for?
Was it? Against or for?
Was it posted for a public hearing? Because there was nothing in the Chronicle.
Yeah, it was published.
It did get posted in the Macomb Daily.
Macomb Daily, it was published, yeah. Um.
It's gotta be, it's gotta be general circulation. Chronicle doesn't post frequently enough. Um, I'm saying, I'm speaking for August here from Poland.
Um, so I bring it back up to the board. Um, are there any further questions or comments? Okay. Seeing none. Oops. Go ahead, Commissioner Meyer.
What about doing a corner clearance like that? The house, uh, below, doing a corner clearance, but having that, uh, angle where you can see, you can see through? Had you thought of something like, because you look at all of these pictures and they're all a closed fence. What about doing a higher fence, either, um, broad, uh, like, a metal fence or a chain link or something like that, but where you can see through it?
So that's, uh, currently they're allowed, uh, four-foot non-site obscuring on that side street. Um, a lot of people don't wanna do that because they do want the privacy, um, being on the corner. And combining, uh, a four-foot then with a privacy for the rest kind of defeats the purpose as well. Um, I, I do think that, like, I, I agree with the corner clearance for driveways. I think that does enhance the safety and anything, that's what, that's what zoning is for, is to, you know, ensure the safety, um, of residents and businesses. So I, I think, I, I'm not sure if this board wants to make a recommendation or not. I can let you know how I'm planning to proceed since, again, this is a council decision, more so than planning commission, if that's. But if you would like to discuss without me telling you this first.
Well, I wanna just, you think about it, when most people get a privacy fence is because they want privacy. It usually always came about when somebody wanted a pool and they couldn't put it in before without putting that fence over that way. And most of them went for, uh, an ordinance, um, for a zoning, uh, Board of Appeals. And, um, and, so, privacy is big. If you're gonna put a pool there, you'd want it for privacy. So, so it's kinda hard to make it, you know, a part of it, non-site obscuring. Um, and to do that non-site obscuring like we're talking about for safety, man, you're already going down to both sides to make it happen. Because it's such a big area. There's no, you know, there's no perfect thing, like you talked about. I, I'm concerned about, my, my grandkids are five years old and they drive a bike with training wheels. And there's, they're just, you know, maybe three feet off the ground total when they're driving. And you can't see, but you could see if you had a clear vision. So, so I just look at that as that part. I understand, you know, I, I'm one not to take away personal property rights at all. But when it comes to my grandkids, you know, I wouldn't wanna see that happen. So, and then when they had a chance to do something about that. So that's, that's just mine. So if any, anybody else wanna, go ahead, Commissioner Meyer?
Well, one thing with, with the majority of these pictures that you've shown, you've showing greater than a four-foot, uh, set, fence. These are taller than four feet, any of these pictures. So, um, I mean, you say four feet, but these.
No, the, the intent would be to allow six.
To allow six, okay, okay.
That's true privacy.
So are these, okay, okay, that's fine.
It's hard to get a privacy with four foot, even if it was sight obscuring.
Well, we keep talking about privacy fences. What about just a chain link fence? You might have children and you have to have a fence to keep them in the yard. And even if they're a corner house, that wouldn't be fair to say, you can't have a fence. If, you know, maybe, uh.
Even have animals.
But not a chain link.
Same with animals. You want, you, same with animals. You wanna have a certain animal and you wanna give it some room to run around and everything. So.
Yeah, I think, you know, to tell people they have to have a privacy fence and, uh, the fence that goes with it and all that, I just don't think that's necessary.
You can put in a four-foot fence. You don't have to have a six-foot fence. I mean, that's.
What is a permissible fence, Lauren?
Uh, on a, on a corner lot or?
On a corner lot, take, lot, take the picture to the left.
Yep, corner lot, side street, four-foot, non-site obscuring, so a chain link type fence, one foot inside the right of way, or the lot line.
Thank you.
Well, what if we try to see both sides here? What if we said, option one, foot and a half clearance with a 45-degree angle next to driveways? Or, you know, to allow.
Yeah.
That's what Lauren was saying. If we make a motion, they're, they're just gonna take it into consideration.
Yeah, I.
Going to council.
The version I plan to bring to council, and this will be in January, is, uh, essentially using option one, adding in the driveway corner clearance here while it's, the ordinance is still in, uh, the process to address that. We can change the, to a 1.5-foot setback from the lot line. And then, it's not addressed here, but explicitly also allowing the four-foot non-site obscuring in addition to just privacy. And I think that covers a lot of the concerns, um, but let me know if there's any that are missing from that kind of direction.
I personally like that, but does anybody wanna, any more comments?
Yeah, Libra.
Me, too.
I'm okay with that. Can?
I like the one and a half, though.
Thank you, I do, too. And Ms. Sir, can you say, within the last year, how many applications have you had for corner fences?
Um, that I've denied her.
No, that have been, that residents have come in and say, I want a fence on a corner lot.
For the, for the corner lot and the privacy, I, I probably get, I probably get one every like three weeks.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
We, we had one in the ZBA.
Yes. Yeah. It, can you advise me? I, I know that you did have one because it's in my neighborhood, but why did that particular lot come in front of the ZBA?
Because it, it was a corner lot. It was across the street from a park.
Right.
There are, there were other corner lots in the neighborhood that had privacy fences that were allowed. And, you know, and they, they stopped it at the front of their house and there was no sight obscuring. You know, the, their garage stopped here and the fence stopped here, you know, and so there was no sight obscuring, so.
Okay, thank you.
It allowed it.
Do you remember on the one, you had one right across from your house, the corner across that had to have because of a pool, or is it one block over?
One block over, yeah.
Block over, and because of that, they actually went further away from the sidewalk, didn't they?
No, I don't recall that. I think that they were one foot in.
They were one foot in, okay. Yeah, that was a long time ago, but, um, okay. So, if everybody's all, any other comments? Anybody wanna make a motion, I guess, or a recommendation, or whatever? That's all we're doing, is a recommendation.
Yeah, and again, if, if no one wants to, you also don't have to.
There you go.
Well, I think council's gonna ask you, what does planning commission recommend?
Okay, if you, if you wanna recommend the, the version we just talked about, I can repeat that, or someone else can also, if they wanna repeat it.
Since we don't have to be as formal with that, with, um, motion and, uh, and everything, we could just, if, if you wanna, you wanna just repeat it real quick and?
Sure, so, um, I'll, I'll go back to the, uh, uh, option one with the addition of allowing a four-foot non-site obscuring fence as well as privacy fences, changing the location to one and a half feet inside the side street lot line and adding, uh, a clear vision triangle for driveways. So the current clear vision triangle proposed is seven and a half. It's, it's seven and a half, seven and a half.
That's perfect.
And that's about half of the 15 that we're proposing for streets.
Yeah. I like that. Does everybody else, and I'll, I'll make a motion to accept that. Seconded by Commissioner Meyer. You wanna, uh, take a roll call on that?
Commissioner Meyer?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Um, yes.
Commissioner Zarnecki?
Yes.
Commissioner Farina?
Yes.
Commissioner Gil, or Kyle, rather?
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Teller?
No.
Chairman Warnock?
Yes. Okay, so that motion, that recommendation passes, so forward that on to council. Yeah, that takes care of our public, oh, we gotta close the public hearing, I guess. I guess now we can.
I think the record was quite clear that no one was here.
Okay, so we're good. I mean, officially, if you want to put down, we'd put it for 7:44. Close public hearing. Um, okay, move on to the next new business is 2026 meeting dates. Lauren?
So, uh, it's fairly straightforward, but these are the regular dates, um, for the first Wednesday of the month, for the 2026 regular meeting dates. So, um, we are noting July 1st, 4th July weekend, the alternate would be the 20th, which is the third Monday. Um, I don't know if there's any other, sometimes other dates come up that folks know they're gonna.
March 3rd is a Tuesday.
Yes, you got March, it should be March 4th. That's what I have written, that. Change that to March 4th, to be a Wednesday.
Yep.
What is Labor Day?
Labor Day.
September 7th. Yeah, yep.
And actually, for July, the 4th of July is on, that's Saturday, so maybe July 1 would be okay.
Yes. That's what I was thinking, too.
I didn't wanna ruin your vacations if you had some.
Don't the big three set, shut down the first two weeks of July?
The big three, is that what you said?
Yeah.
And how does that affect this board?
Well, it affects.
Vacations. They would be on vacations.
For public?
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
But I guess if somebody was coming forward, if we had any applicants for anything, they're gonna be, you know, either they won't do it then, if it's not acceptable to them, and they move it to the next month.
It was just an observation. I don't care either, date. The, the notation at the end of the draft, though, it does say the alternate date is being the third Wednesday is actually the third Monday.
Okay, so, do we need a formal motion then?
Yeah, I believe.
You wanna do a roll call? Or we, can we just eyes?
Yeah.
That's fine, but there obviously needs to be a motion and a second, so.
Right, oh, yeah.
Yeah, just to make clear, um, because I know we do get kind of in the weeds with alternate dates and things of that nature, so just so the record's clear of one that we're meeting.
Anybody wanna make a motion?
Are we leaving it the first, or are we going to the alternate date?
What, make a.
Somebody make a motion.
I'm gonna say, okay.
I, yeah, yeah, if you wanna, before we do motion, get a feeling for it. I've got no problem with either one.
I don't either, okay. I'll move to, um, accept the calendar dates for 2026 as proposed, as presented, um, with two clarifications. I think, um, March 3 needs to be changed to March 4. I would go ahead with the July 1 date, and the notation at the end, if that is notified, like, the alternate date is the third Monday of the month.
Okay, do we have a second for that?
Second.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Zarnecki's motion, uh, and seconded by Commissioner Barr. Uh, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Seeing that, it passes then, that those will be our meeting dates for next year. Okay? All right, moving forward. Get to. And it's in the master. All right, so let's move on to our unfinished business, a fun one, zoning ordinance discussion. So, as we have written here, Articles 3, 4, 5, and 6, um, let's, let's see what you have.
All right, thank you. I, I thought it'd be easier to break it up into more digestible chunks, so, um, so starting with Article 3, Article 3 is zoning districts and map. I wanted to discuss the map before we talked about the districts because that's, might form the discussion. Um, I brought the future land use map with you. That's the adopted future land use map, which informs the zoning changes. Uh, again, some things, uh, that we worked out in steering committee was that the fric, central, uh, central business district core infringe didn't need a designation, different designation, and that the flex corridor overlay, um, was not a good fit for the current development pattern as it stands. So, um, I know Randy had concerns about his house being industrial. And we can, and we can certainly change that. I'm not, this is, again, in draft form. We can certainly change that back to residential, um, although you adopted your own.
Yeah, I noticed. That was my mistake in not catching it then. So I noticed that just today, when I looked this morning.
But we, we can, I know those are all homes, so we can change that back to.
Yeah, and just a little background real quick before, I, I don't wanna take away from your presentation at all, but, um, that area right there, just knowing that it's all floodplain and you can't do much with the property. Industrial would have a hard time, uh, because the Harrington drain runs right through that, between that area and the high school. And everything is, if you just look, there are just two, then two new houses from the past three, four years had to be elevated four feet about. And they had to have flood vents in their crawl space. They can't have basements. That was why we always had a problem, anybody trying to build on that property. So I could see problems with industrial, uh, too, because you can't add any dirt into the floodplain. So, um, it just makes more sense, I think, and if they came along after, they could always get, if somebody wants coming by us all out over there, I'm sure they can come and get, get rezoned, you know? So I, I just like the idea that that, and the old one was all, um, the previous wa, not. So I, I just like the idea that that, and the old one was all, um, the previous, not, not the draft, but the previous was all residential medium, including the high school and all.
Yeah, so I, I'd propose changing it back to the RM.
Okay.
Are there any other areas that are standing out that anyone's concerned about?
Sean, you were mentioning.
I'm sure everyone's finding their homes right now.
Yeah, so if you look.
The new one, I think.
The future land use is the one we adopted in the master plan.
Yeah.
Okay, the new one.
Though I know.
Yeah, for the, in the zone.
Why are we taking all this out of the original one?
Oh, we just, I think you just, you compacted a lot of them into smaller.
Yeah, so the, the parks and the, set parks and semi-public, um, we don't have a special zoning district for those sort of things, those are allowed in the residential, so that's why they'll, they're colored residential.
So you just turn the parks into like residential medium or?
Yeah, and truthfully, there's only one current rec parcel and it's like part of the golf course, that's the only rec parcel in Frazier. So the parks currently aren't in the rec category.
So when we, um, I like the downtown district, I'm just wondering how, because originally we included like the west side of Utica. So with the sheets, is that a rezoning for that? So that's why.
Correct, condition of.
So that's commercial general, right?
Yeah, so functionally what we did in, in the drafting phase is kind of cut off the downtown at Utica and focus on Garfield and 14 Mile is that kind of core downtown area where we would like to see more downtown-like development.
I only thought, because we'd go right to the library, it would kind of include it in the downtown area, but.
It's, it's just so tricky with the sheets, it's a large site and it really kind of cuts off.
Yeah.
That whole section.
But then it would be a cutoff, so if we can't change the, the sheets now, you know? I like it, I think it's a big area for the downtown. I, you don't want to go, it, I mean, I've seen things where they try, propose to come all the way down to where Garfield meets Utica and that.
That would be cool.
You know, but.
Well, if there's no other comments on the map, um, we can move on to Article 4. I think that, so Article 3 does have, um, the schedule of regulations and it does have scheduled permitted uses. This is repeated in the district summaries, so instead of going through two times, I think we can go through when we go through the district summaries, if that's all right with everyone.
If things change like, like in, I like, I like the schedule of regulations, it's so much easier to understand, but if we change something.
We'll change it in both.
We could always change it back, so there, so.
Yeah, yeah, and, um, as a logistical note, um, I was discussing with Mr. Farina, but I will update based on the changes planning commission made, and I can provide, um, updated sections, not the whole ordinance, just the sections we've reviewed, if that's helpful to keep things, um, straight for folks.
That would be very helpful.
Yes.
So with that, uh, we're moving into residential zoning district provisions, the first section's 3232, we're on page 33. I guess, I know we said we want to go line by line, how do you want to exactly do this?
I think if anybody has anything that they looked at, it's kind of hard to do.
I know no one wants to hear me read.
I think line by line is more like when the big topic changes of general provisions and things like that, as opposed to, this is one issue, the residential zoning district.
Sure.
That's the way I look at it.
And so provisions applicable, it, the provisions applicable in all of these, um, sections are mainly for people to be able to see what they should also be looking at when they're coming for either a site plan or when they're trying to, if they're trying to build a home, something like that, so they can see, okay, fences are going to be in this section. Okay, let's say someone's making a development, okay, residential interest ways, this is what, where that's going to be found. So it's kind of serving as a guide for that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask, Ms. Yara, I, I know I've presented comments to you, I don't know how many other comments you've received from commissioners, but I'm just asking if those are going to be, some of the changes will be incorporated, and I agree that we don't have to discuss tonight, but I don't know how everything's going to be. I guess maybe I'm asking, was there anything major that you received from commissioners that should be discussed and bring it up when, at the appropriate time?
Yeah, I do, I do have the comments that I received.
A lot were grammatical or things like that, I think, right?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, for the, the smaller grammatical ones, I think it's, it's an easy enough change. It would help me if you do recall your, if you do have a major comment to bring it up.
For res, you're right, I agree, my residential were just grammatical.
But yeah, that's my, um, approach to that. So are we moving to page 34? So this is the RL residential low-density district. So each of these district summaries has an intent, it's got the permitted uses, the special uses, some of them have accessory uses, so accessory uses are only permitted as an accessory use to a permitted use. So when you see accessory dwelling units, it's not like you can have a, a K-12 school and an accessory dwelling unit, it's going to be, um, single detached dwelling mainly, I get, um, there are, so when you also see the section after in green, that's a reference that there's use standards, so that use standard's going to say that it's only permitted as accessory to a single detached dwelling unit. Just as a point of clarification. Same with, uh, home-based businesses, the, uh, state licensed childcare or foster care. Does anyone have any concerns about the permitted or special or accessory uses? Not getting into what the use standards are, though.
Which page are we, you talking about?
Page 34.
No, I have something on 35.
Now definitely is easy to read with having that and you got the section in the green, you could go right to that section if you're concerned about one item, you're not bouncing all over, that's the problem with the old zoning ordinance was.
Kind of stacks.
Yeah, you didn't know where to go even because.
Someone wants the uses in the commercial general, I have to print them for a different district.
Yeah, yeah.
Now will these go right to the, are they like hotkeys where the?
Yeah, so municode should be able to cross-link them.
Okay.
In the, in the PDF online version that we create, it, it is hyperlinked, um, but it will have to go to municode to be uploaded, so.
Okay.
So no, we're good on the uses, it seems. Lot minimum, lot coverage, impervious surface coverage, setbacks, they're all down there too. Some of the items have a footnote, this is, this is actually, this is carried over from the current one about the front setback, but it's just allowing that if there is deviation in the whole block is, is less than or greater than, it has to match the block.
Ms. Lauren, I'm, I'm lost as to where you're working on, I'm sorry.
Page 34?
We're still on page 34.
Yeah, sorry, I meant the dimensional standard.
I thought we were.
All right.
Everyone's excited to get to the RM, I know. Any concerns, questions, comments?
The, the thing about 34 is that if I remember, you, you said the state licensed foster care, large groups homes, um, we're going to be taking control from the city and putting it to the state, to meeting a bunch of stuff like that. I've talked to a number of people and they don't like that. They say the state is, is cutting a bunch of services, you know, and we should keep the, uh, the control at the city level as much as we can.
What people are you referring to? Residents?
Yeah.
Oh, but it's always state-controlled, Commissioner Farina?
Yeah, we can't go and do inspections for, to see that they keep compliant.
Okay.
So, I mean, the state's got to be part of that.
But there are parts that we do now, right? Actually, that we do now.
For a child, so for in-home childcare, um, I, we would require that they provide their license essentially, which proves that the state, uh, did their inspections. So are we good to move on to our?
Yeah.
No, no concern?
There's no more concerns. Or else we're just going to stay silent here, if we're silent, I guess you just keep moving.
Um, so RM allows, now we're allowing. Yes.
I just want you to know I have a concern.
Are you going to share the, what's, was it the concern you shared?
Single detached dwelling units?
Yes.
Okay, those are supposedly, we, you talked about mother-in-law, putting a mother-in-law building out there or something like that?
It's an accessory dwelling, but yeah.
Yeah, I'm thoroughly against that, okay? The reason is, you may have a mother-in-law, but mom's not going to last forever. It then becomes an open building that they are going to rent out and we will become a city of renters. And I don't think that's what the small town we have wants to be as a city of renters. That's, that's my concern, and we've talked about that. That's what I thought we put through from the steering committee, that we would not allow, uh, detached buildings, and I know Kathy said, well, I'd like a building that, you know, where I could go with my kids and, you know, but I'm not worried about that, I'm worried about.
Living, dwelling.
When mom goes away, you're going to have all these other people moving into these people, because you've got a building there that you're paying taxes on, that you're going to want to make some of that money back. And.
We don't have the ADU under the residential medium, though. Am I, can, you know?
I mean, it's, it's accessory, so it has to follow the use standards and it has to be, it can't just be a tiny home on a lot, it has to be an accessory. We, I know, we've discussed it, and we can talk about when we get into the use standards of it, I think that we did agree in allowing whether it's detached or attached is kind of where we're differing, but.
Okay.
We did allow, we did discuss allowing as an accessory.
We allowed attached, was my understanding.
The subcommittee, and I'll tell you, I don't recall, I thought we did want them, but you're thinking it was only as attached, okay.
I recalled attached too, but.
You did?
These are single family, they're not multifamily.
No, they're associated with the primary home.
So it can't be, it can't be sold separately, it's with the lot.
But, single-family dwelling.
You can rent, and we've had disagreements about the rental market and renters as well, that I don't know if we necessarily need to rehash at this point, but I.
It's almost like allowing a duplex where we don't allow.
Exactly what it is. It's a single-family dwelling, it's for a single family, not to rent out to a renter in 10 years. That becomes a multi-unit dwelling.
I agree with you, but even if it's attached, is that how you feel also?
No.
No, okay, and.
At the end of our block, the guy just put up a structure for somebody upstairs, you know, and a big family room downstairs and, yeah, that's.
That's A, okay.
And it's one address per lot. You can't have multiple addresses.
Right.
So.
You can have a suite A and a suite B.
Well, yeah, but not by, you can't have, it's.
An actual address.
Yeah. I mean, I've seen it, yes.
It is an actual.
I've seen it because, you know, but they're multifamily then.
A through Z, or 26, A through Z in my house if I wanted to, you just, you just do it. Addresses don't really, I don't think, make a difference on that kind of thing. And, uh, ADUs are pretty common, like across the state, across the nation, it's, it's a pretty common thing, uh, in some places they're as common as, as having a garage. You know, we're not tacking on entire houses onto things, ADUs are effectively like apartments. A lot of times, like, an ADU that I've seen is like the upstairs of a garage, maybe not in like this case scenario, but like, they're not like these whole other things that are being rented out, uh, in a lot of cases, but even still, like, if you meet the use ordinance for it, you got the space, I think that attached and detached is kind of just semantics at that point. It's going to, going to be allowed, it's going to be allowed, if it's touching the other wall or if it's not, if it meets the use, meets the use. I don't think there's anything inherently wrong with people that rent, but.
Neither do I.
That's, that's kind of.
It is, the building code is single fa, one and two family dwellings and then multi, so you got two different codes that you're working with, even when you're.
An ADU is like a whole different thing. Because it's still a single-family home, it's still classified not just at the county level, but like, you know, from like a standpoint of like even a lender would look at it as a, just a single-family home with a accessory dwelling unit, and that's just exactly what it is, it's an accessory. I think that if the use ordinance permits it, you should be allowed to do it, you know, there's stipulations in place that make sure that you're not, you know, cramming a bunch of people onto a small property, but.
Let me ask you this, what, what does the building department say?
The building official, you want?
Yeah.
The building official doesn't have concerns about accessory dwelling units?
I talked to.
You've talked to Carson?
Not Carson.
He's the building official.
Talked to Logan.
I don't have Mr. Logan's comments on the ordinance.
Well, that's, then I think we should take it back to the steering committee.
Steering, I mean, my recollection of the steering committee is that they were.
We have two different recollections of the steering committee.
Can I have yours again, did you think it was just, you thought it was attached and detached?
I thought it was detached as well, as long as they met a lot minimum.
I mean, that's what you have in the draft, so, okay.
Anyway.
I mean, ultimately, ultimately, um, the steering committee did help quite a bit in creating this draft, planning commission's the body that has to recommend, um, to council, so. I don't necessarily want to keep doing a back forth type thing, but, um, again, it, it seems like the concern is more on the configuration of them, which we get into in the use standards further in the ordinance, correct?
Well, that's my concern, we can talk about under use if that's what you want to talk about.
I understand your concern and I think maybe it's best to talk it under the use, so we can, you know, discuss it in detail then, that'd be my suggestion anyway.
Fun January. January meetings are the fun, that's the, that's when the sheets one was too, January.
Yes, it was, yes.
Always have to start off with a.
Yeah.
Our side of the board, are we paying attention? All right. No concerns on the, on the uses or special land uses? All right. All right, moving down the page, dimensional standards, little smaller, six thousand square foot lot minimum, lot width fifty minimum, you can see the rest, same provision about front setback, allowing some variation if the established block is more or less than the setback. I heard quiet means no concerns.
No concerns.
So, I'm on page thirty-six now. RT residential transition, so this is a new zoning district. If you refer to the draft map, you can see that it's largely around general commercial areas, actually, sorry, that's the RH. It's generally around the, it's multifamily, it's around the central business district, it's along fourteen mile, serves as a buffer behind Utica as well. So, again, the intent is to, to kind of provide the transition between commercial and higher density to the lower-density areas. So, again, permitted uses duplex, government municipal, libraries, religious institutions, attached and detached, single dwelling unit, and now triplexes as well. Also allowing multi-unit as a special land use. Questions, comments, concerns?
What is the triplex, three?
Which makes it tough on a smaller lot, anyway, to do it.
Yeah, there are some of those RTs that are a little larger, but yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got point three-nine acres in mine. I could probably do a duplex, probably even apply for a fourplex if I wanted to, but that's a special land use.
And then, moving down the page, dimensional standards, again, same six thousand, it's a lot of the same from the last one, but allowing a little bit more height. Questions, comments, concerns?
The front yard, you've got a little hash mark there, does that mean that there's no maximum impervious surface coverage in the front yard? There's just a hatch, hatch mark?
Yeah, that is what that means, let me just check, it's not a mistake. Yeah, that is correct.
Okay. Could we do it, if we do a hatch, could we do someplace to say none allowed or something like that?
To make it clearer.
Right, right, right. And then, the next question I had on that sheet was, we have a footnote B, but there's no footnote shown, is that, was there supposed to be something there, or?
Nope, just a typo.
Okay.
Just checking.
Mine doesn't show footnote B.
To RH, so residential high-density, so this is the zoning designation where, where multi-unit dwelling, so apartment buildings are most appropriate, larger attached, even larger attached, single, so that's the main addition, also allowing indoor and outdoor rec, religious institutions, senior living facilities as well in this district. Questions, comments, concerns on the uses? Moving down to the dimensional, so it's a lot minimum, ten thousand two hundred square feet width eighty, I can change that dash to no maximum for clarification, and the footnote should say A.
Okay, yeah, I thought so, but-
Yep.
Yep.
So, there's only one footnote, then, the A?
It's just the A, yes, correct.
Same thing.
Okay, with that, we get to move to Article Five, commercial uses. So, previously, we had commercial and office uses. I think that classifying as office uses is kind of a trend that we're seeing less and less of, a single district for office uses, it's being integrated into the, the more neighborhood-type commercial districts, so that's what we did here as well. In addition, there was, there were only a couple parcels that were OS in Frazier anyhow. So, I'm on page thirty-nine, section thirty-two, thirty-seven, again, that's the provisions applicable to commercial districts, so talking about the lighting, parking, loading, landscaping, screening, again, this is almost more so an index to people who are gonna be developing of, this is where you should look for these standards. All right, CN, commercial neighborhood, so this is an existing district, intent is to serve daily shopping service needs of nearby residents, so it's not supposed to be super intense. So, we've got ours and maker spaces, we've got body art and tattoo shops, so that's a big change from the last one, which is, treats tattoo shops and pawnbrokers as like, these uses that need to be kind of buffered extremely and hidden away in industrial, so allowing them to be in the, the commercial neighborhood as well. Childcare centers, cultural centers, financial institutions, massage establishments, membership organizations, then, of course, your offices, personal service establishments, pharmacies, grooming, we've got nursery and greenhouses, physical fitness, gyms, rec, restaurants, and second-hand slash rummage shops, which I don't think was a use at all previously, we would have probably classified as retail, but more explicitly permitting it, and then studios, so anything dance, art, photography related. We're also allowing special land uses, bars, brewery, distillery, wineries, duplexes, funeral homes, hospital, again, the ones that have the section after have some use standards, so they might not be suitable for most parcels if there's a lot minimum, but things like that, tobacco smoke shop, theater. Any questions, comments? Mr. Farina?
I have a question on, my comment was, the body art, tattoo shops, I know they've come a long way in straightening up, the clientele is different than it used to be. Where are they allowed now?
They're allowed in the IC with, with some buffering requirements from, I think it's like churches, schools, things like that.
So, as long as they're still so far from a school?
Yeah, yeah, and it's still, I think, has to go through special land use as well, so it's, it's functioning really hard to be a tattoo shop in Frazier right now.
Okay, now, do we want them in CN? Or do we want them buffered from schools and?
I mean, I think the reality is, is a kid's not going in and getting a tattoo.
Which they can't because they've got a-
Right. I don't-
And almost none of these are located anywhere near a school. There's just this one right here, and I don't even know if that's the school.
Okay.
You know, I apologize, gentlemen, because I've lost everything you've said because we're not speaking into the speakers, I don't hear you. We're talking about tattoo shops?
Yeah.
And the buffering from schools, is, am I correct?
Right, do we wanna keep them buffered from schools, churches, you know?
Thank you, just so I know what you're sharing.
Okay.
Cool.
Okay, dimensional standards, again, moving down, we're still on page forty, see the area, lot minimum, setbacks, the building height, maximum two stories. No footnotes.
None, all your dashes are gonna be none or not applicable or whatever, right, throughout the document, I'm assuming?
And slash A.
What was that?
The last two were none allowed, you just asked about the dashes, are they gonna be not applicable, none allowed?
No maximum required, or? It could also be not applicable if that's easier to understand for folks, let me know. CBD, so, central business district, currently, it's actually community business district, but it always, it's the only place I've heard of that does it, community business district, everywhere else does central, and it's tripped me up for two years, so. Central business district, that's the, ideally downtown, so again, allowed bars, tattoo shops, artisan maker spaces, breweries, distillery, winery, childcare, cultural centers, grocery store, medical office, museums, personal service establishments, gyms, a lot of the same in CN, restaurants, studio, and then, upper-level residential, and this is aspirational, but if it's, if it's permitted, it's a step closer. So, that would be, you know, having your shop on the front, on the, on the ground floor and then having apartments above.
Living works.
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So, we still have smoke shops as special land use, and we still, and veterinarians, and then, of course, PUDs are kind of special land use throughout. Any questions on those, comments, concerns? Okay. Into the dimensional standards, there's no, no lot minimum, no lot minimum width, no max coverage, impervious service coverage, big change, front yard setback zero, so that means they could build right up to the lot line. That's more typical what you see with the downtown, I think, there's still some, some issues, the right-of-way on fourteen's fairly wide, so we'd still need to probably, for it to truly feel like a downtown, it's more than just the zoning, it's gonna be coordination with the county, it's gonna be coordination with private developers, it's, would probably help to have a DDA again, but-
So, what does, what does the dash mean here?
Not applicable.
Not applicable.
Now, the footnote, you got a big A there, but is that, it took me a while to find the footnote because I'm looking for a small A, but it's a big A under the rear yard setback.
Yeah, I can, I can subscript it.
That'd probably be the best thing.
I noted, too, that the recreation outdoor was not listed under permitted use, so it's just a additional permitted use in there. I believe, right?
Should it? Yeah, okay.
I'm guessing, I'm not sure.
I'm sorry, I missed what you said.
Recreation, outdoor.
Outdoor.
I said to add the recreation outdoor as a permitted use.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking about that, and then I remembered.
Discuss it, I'm okay with that.
There's a, there's a huge park in the, in the CBD, so that's a good call. It wouldn't make it illegal, it'd just be non-conforming.
We, can we just put a hash mark there and put indoor and outdoor?
Uh, we do have a separated as different uses, so I will, I will add outdoor into the permitted, so it's explicit. And then CG, commercial general, so this is the more intense commercial district, we can see on the zoning map, it's towards Utica and fifteen, and then Utica, Grossbeck, and right in the middle of town, but, again, that's a conditional rezoning, can't change that. So, this one, a lot of the same things, it's adding, it's allowing tobacco, smoke shop by rights, allowing theaters. The, another big change is the special land use, we've kind of gone back and forth on this, but adult businesses permitted as a special land use, it's still have to go to planning commission, there's some buffering standards in the use standards, but doing it this way, we can't outright exclude uses per the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, but we can, you know, so we do wanna list them somewhere, right now, there, it'd be industrial, special land use. The idea is, is sort of daylighting, so allowing, if they're allowed for some reason, again, has to go through planning commission, they would be in visible areas, which, so they're not hidden away industrial, who knows what's happening, no one's there at night.
We can control the restrictions.
Yeah, and so, currently, again, there's buffering, there's a provision, it can't be in a strip mall, so it has to be standalone, just not much, so. Gas station, special land use, vehicle repair, special land use, car wash, special land use, twenty-four operation, special land use. Another new thing is mobile vending, this is, might need to actually be changed to mobile food vending, I think we called it, but that's, food trucks mainly is the, the intent of that, so.
Is it meant to be specifically food trucks, or meant to be, because mobile vending can have somebody driving around a truck?
Yeah, so, let me flip to the thing real quick. The main intent is food trucks.
You don't want them stored there, right?
No, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be permanent. I'm flipping to, apologize. Yeah, it's changed to mobile, sorry, I apologize, it's mobile food vending in, in section thirty-two sixty-six, so the intent is, so it, it could be a hot dog cart, if you have a hot dog cart.
Yeah.
But I will change that to food. That one is also, it got changed in some, but it's also in the CN and CBD, it allows accessory, but I will change those all to food. So, there's a lot of standards about, you know, obtaining your health department certification and not being in a location for more than a certain amount of time. Okay, lot minimum, lot ma, max coverage, none, so these, these are, all the dashes are not applicable. Two-story height limit. Any thoughts? We're in the industrial districts, we're in Article Six, page forty-three, and this is the last section of the night.
Hmm.
Same thing here with the, almost like checklist for applicants, for which section, to find which provision. Flipping the page to page forty-four, so this is what the IR currently is, we changed it to LI, light industrial, I think the naming convention's a little more intuitive for what the district intent is. Again, still allowing bars, breweries, I think, as a trend, land use trend, we're seeing a lot of breweries and wineries kind of wanna move into those industrial spaces, so we're allowing that. Contractor yard, equipment sales, manufacturing, low intensity, gyms are allowed, again, we're seeing gyms like CrossFit wanna move into an industrial space, things like that. Research and development, so we did take out the, it was a, see, I don't even remember it, we don't, we have one parcel that's this district, and I can't even remember the name of it. I'll look it up, though. The OR, Office Research District, so we're allowing those uses in this light industrial. Trade vocational schools, vehicle repair, vehicle sales and rent, veterinary clinic, wireless communication facilities. Any questions, comments, concerns on this section? I'll change it to mobile food vending and the accessory. All right. Dimensional standards. Something's wrong with the footnotes. And those dashes will be not applicable. I believe the footnote should have been D and E, it just should be A and B, and that carries over to the next page where it's A and B. Front yard setback is 35 feet, unless it's on gross spec, then it's 50. So we were seeing there's a big difference in the current configuration of lots that are along gross spec versus the industrial park.
So that's what the footnote will be?
That's what the footnote is, yeah, it's on the next page.
Oh, okay.
And then B refers to ensuring that it's buffered from residential uses, even more so than the required 20 rear setback.
I don't have a B on my copy, I'm sorry.
Should be on page, is it not on page 45?
45. You have a 45.
I don't have 45. Dropped it on the floor when I was reading this.
That's all that's on there. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Teamwork.
All right. GI, this is General Industrial, this is what is currently the IC. So this is for more medium to high-intensity industrial uses. So again, a lot of the same things, get distribution centers, pawn shops, self-storage, trucking, warehousing, those types of uses, special land uses, bars, crematorium, crematories, event hall, gas station, smoking lounge, things like that. Questions, comments, concerns, thoughts? All right, dimensional standards. The letters are correct, but they should be A and B. So they do correspond, but it's the same note from the previous one. Any lingering thoughts or questions about the material we discussed? If not, I will plan to provide updated copy, hard copies for everyone at the next meeting for the sections we just reviewed, so I'll carry over any changes into the permitted use table.
I've got one thing on this.
Yeah.
For the general industrials, industrial buildings, correct. But it says on here that there's no parking in the front of the buildings? Towards the bottom?
Mm-hmm.
So industrial buildings, they can't have parking lots in the front?
Uh, no, not under, see, let me, I'll just check if that was current or changed. It is current that it's not allowed in the front or side, we've seen a lot of, do it anyway, but.
Businesses in Frazier's like that.
All those in that area, there's a.
Every one of them. No, not everyone, but probably 90%.
A lot.
Trying to eliminate that.
Right.
And I think.
So it's new.
A lot of them have parking in the rear, and just it keeps it contained. A lot of times, they start parking in the front, and it starts sprawling, next thing you know, they're on the grass, next thing you know, kind of just sprawl, so keeping it contained within the lot is the intent.
It's going to be new businesses that come in, that change, and they're coming to us for a site plan approval.
Right.
Now, we've got to use those standards, I guess. It's still going to be things that can get a variance for. If this lot is set up that way, it's kind of tough if the building's already that way and takes up all the space, and they've got to meet these parking requirements.
If a new owner comes in?
Yes.
Or tenant, okay.
Yes. So they'd have to, you know, take away part of the building to meet them, maybe, but.
How would that work, though, Sarah, if a new owner or tenant came in, and there's parking already allowed in the front?
So if there's, you know, approved site plan where there's parking allowed in the front, it's a change of, if it's a change of use that's the same at, if it's a change of, sorry, if it's a continuation of a same use, then they don't have any issues, yeah. If it's a change of use that requires a special land use, they have to come before with the site plan. I believe it would be an existing nonconformity, unless they would like to expand it, then they'd have to get that Class B. But otherwise, it'd be existing nonconforming.
Yeah. I'm sure we'll run into something.
Right, yes.
Okay, thank you.
That brings me to the end of that, so I appreciate everyone's discussion.
Good. So, public communications and non-agenda items. Then there, monthly report.
I don't have any, I believe, I always overlap with Commissioner Farina's ZVA liaison report, so I don't necess, I'll let Commissioner Farina discuss the ZVA case in November, that was the only thing that changed.
We, Big Boy came for approval of a number of variances, used the parking lot, the grass area is a parking lot, and there were a number of exceptions that were put on that, that it has to be lit, you know, temporary lighting has to be put out, it's got to be lined, all of that, and you have to put up a fence that stops headlights from, because that area is raised, and if we're going to park cars this way, and it goes, the headlights would go directly into condos over there. So we made them put up a fence there, and they agreed to all that, and motion got passed.
Did they discuss anything about that new parking type thing on grass with a mat system, things like that, anybody? I get to get the, I'll get the manufacturer, he said he'd bring, come in here and do a presentation for us.
That would be nice.
Yeah, this way we get to see when things like that come up, and if we can, it only helps those people to have a thing like that, because you're not going to have ruts or anything, it just gives you a surface.
Well, the thing is that the city has a fair here and there, a lot of park on the grass. You know, St. Maliki has a fair there, a lot of park on the grass, you know, so.
Is that it?
That is it. We, our meeting for this month is canceled, lack of business, so we won't meet until January, and that will be on the alternate date, because it's January the 2nd, isn't it?
It's the 1st, yeah.
It's the 1st.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, thanks. Commissioners' comments and items of interest or concern. Let's just start right at the end. Trevor?
I got nothing.
Frank?
I want to wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Hope you're all healthy. Got some good news, my wife had a, some testing done that showed something, and she was retested and came out clear, and so she's healthy, and, you know, so.
That's great.
I wish everybody health, you know? So, have a great holiday, everybody.
Thanks. Commissioner Cowan?
Nothing, nothing at this time.
Commissioner Meyer?
I wish everyone a happy Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and St. Margaret of Scotland's Women's Club has a cookie walk this Saturday from 8:00 to 11:30. Well, it's 11:30, if the cookies don't run out. They're $8 a pound, and it's for its churches.
I'm sure they're Christmas cookies.
We had to make 12 dozen apiece.
Wow.
Yes, a minimum of 12 dozen.
Home baked.
Oh, yes, home baked, that was a requirement. So I took off yesterday to make my cookies.
Good job. That's it?
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Burr?
I just wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and I hope that families come together, and we have good holidays. And I have to say that St. Maliki has a lot of activities right now, and you might want to just pull it up on the computer and see what they are, you might find some are interesting, you might want to go.
Thanks. Commissioner Zernicki?
Happy holidays, thank you.
Thanks. Let's go to you, Jennifer, anything?
Thanks for welcoming me here today. It's been exciting, and August will be back.
Good to have you.
Yes, thank you.
Line?
Nothing for me at this time, sure.
Nothing, Alyssa?
Nothing, just enjoy the holiday season.
And I say the same thing, too. Everybody have a good Christmas, going to be great for me with grandkids, and I'm looking forward to a great Christmas. I guess have one, too. I'll take any motion for adjournment if anybody wants to do that, or you want to stay here.
Second.
All right, so moved by Commissioner Farina, supported by Commissioner Toller. That's it?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at?
We need to take a vote, Mr. Burr.
Oh, that's right, everybody's so excited, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I don't hear no nays, so, meeting is closed at 8:43.